The Concord Select Board. The first item on the agenda is for us to adjourn to executive sessions for the purpose of discussing ongoing litigation regarding Esterbrook Road. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and I so declare. So I would entertain a motion.
Move to open to executive session for the purposes of discussing ongoing litigation regarding Esterbrook Road and to return to open session upon the close of executive session. The executive session is needed to protect strategy discussions affecting litigation on the stated matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Myself, Lynda Escobedo, aye.
All right, the motion passes and we will adjourn to executive session to return Good evening. Welcome to the February 10th meeting of the Concord Select Board. I will remind everyone that the meeting is being both broadcast and recorded. Our first order of business is a consent agenda on which there are town accountant warrants, gift acceptance, Middlesex Savings Bank, $10,000 to Concord Police Department, Middlesex Savings Bank, $10,000 for the Concord Fire Department, and we're grateful for those very generous gifts. One day special license for Kathy Ritticker Forum for Children and Families at 40 Stowe Street on June 11th from 6:30 to 9:00 P.M., wine and malt only. The Concord Market, 77 Lowell Road, on February 14th, 5:00 to 8:00 P.M., wine only. Salt Box Farm at 40 Westford Road on February 18th from 4:30 to 7:30 P.M., wine and malt beverages only. The Concord Children's Center, 1300 Main Street, March 28th from 6:30 to 10:30 P.M., wine and malt beverage only. And then a number at, for Verro Farm at 11 Wheeler Road on March 20th from 6:00 to 9:00 P.M., all alcoholic beverages. On May 10th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 P.M., wine and malt beverages only. On June 6th from 12:00 to 3:30 P.M., wine and malt beverages only. June 12th from 5:00 to 7:00 P.M., wine and malt beverages only. June 14th from 3:30 to 7:00 P.M., wine and malt beverages only. On July 24th from 6:00 to 8:00 P.M., wine and malt beverages only. August 7th, 6:00 to 8:00 P.M., wine and malt beverages only. August 30th, 5:00 to 8:00 P.M., wine and malt beverages only. And October 16th, 6:00 to 8:00 P.M., wine and malt beverages only. I have a motion, please.
Move to accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Paws, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda.
Can I just ask those two bits from Middlesex Bank, are they for fire, please, are they for a particular purpose?
I know in the fire department's case, I believe it is the thermal imaging. I think I put that in my town manager's report last time, and I don't have it on the police yet.
Very generous, and thanks for your time.
Next item on the agenda is the town manager's report. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did submit a printed writ report, just briefly. Big news, the town did receive a grant from Mass DOT for the workforce transportation program to fund the Concord Shuttle, which would be an extension of Crosstown Connect, which is really, it's a regional transportation service that's based, I think, in Acton, but run by a nonprofit, Crosstown Connect. It's, they're a great partner, it's an exciting grant. It included grant applications, so you can see the goals, really connecting to the employment centers and the T stops and other transportation nodes. So this is really, I mean, all, congratulations to everyone who was a part of preparing this and submitting this grant. It really is a great, great win for the town, and we'll build on some of our other efforts that I think we'll talk about later. Which also, the town is looking into doing a demonstration project for a local trolley bus that would be, would help service the tourism community, and really, in, really, this, the initiative of the trolley is to really help stimulate economic vitality in our local business districts, and so that's one of the things we're going to look to do. We had talked to Lexington about the Liberty Ride, and we are going to continue to talk to them about that, but plugging into that service, the way they have it constructed, is a tough way to fit for us right now at this time, and for a relatively low cost, we can lease a trolley and try this out for about six months, so I think we're going to try that, and I think it's going to be kind of a nice opportunity. We'll certainly learn a lot through the process and hopefully build on something that we can regionalize and strengthen that connection between Lexington and Concord for park visitors. I'd also note that the effort on our data breach investigation is still ongoing, and we're still working with our third party law firm and consultants on how to best proceed, and we do expect some notifications to be going out with employees, retirees, and potentially former employees, based on the first kind of round of data analysis. Other population that may be received notice would, is still being determined through the, like I said, the data mining process that we're going through, which I, is much more time consuming than I would have hoped for, but it's unfortunately outside of our control. And then we have submitted a letter of interest for 91B Main Street DOT parcel that they don't seem to have much use for now, so we'll stay tuned on that. And then the last thing, it's not in the printed report, is we're about to, I believe, award a contractor, or we may have already awarded it, for tree trimming through CMLP, and there's a map of the streets that will be subject to tree trimming. I asked Dave what to put that on CMLP's website, so people can see the map. There's a lot of streets that are being covered, but probably in the next maybe month or so you'll see, I think it's Marquis Tree Service, they do a lot of work in the area, they'll be out there working, so if you see them, you'll know that that's part of CMLP's work. That's it for me.
Any questions for the town manager?
No, this is great. The Crosstown Connect grant award and the trolley project will dovetail perfectly, but quite independently into the work on transportation we started locally.
Excellent.
Right, thank you very much. Next item is Chair's remarks. I have a few brief, for a reminder that the Select Board Public Hearing on Warren Articles is two weeks from tonight, at 7:00 here in Town House, and the next night, the 25th, is the public hearing for the Planning Board, again, here in the Town House. The Finance Committee will have two public hearings, March 9th and March 16th, at 7:00 here in the Town House. Reminder that the presidential primary is coming up March 3rd, and the town election is March 31st. On a brief update on Concord 2025, I met with representatives from Bedford, Lexington, Lincoln, Arlington, along with representative from Hanscom Air Force Base and the Superintendent of Vinoman National Park, trying to develop a comprehensive list of known activities that will take place during that Patriots' Day sort of weekend in 2025. I'm still working on a charge for the committee that has been helped by folks that I've been meeting with. It looks now as if what I will ask the Select Board and the town manager to consider is a joint appointment of an executive committee that would be in charge of the overall set of activities, and then they would be authorized to appoint subcommittees to deal with particular things like publicity or parking or things like that. Hopefully, I'll have a draft ready for you at our next meeting. I want to say that on March 29th at 1:00 to 3:00 P.M. at Harvey Wheeler, there's going to be a community session on climate-friendly home heating and cooling, and that will be held again on the 29th, 1:00 to 3:00 P.M. at Harvey Wheeler, and there's a second community event being held in Wayland on March 4th from 7:00 to 9:00 P.M. in the Wayland Town Building at 41 Cotchituate Road. And following the community session, there will be a community forum on Article 40, which Article 40 is the one on fossil fuels, and this is a citizen-sponsored session, so that's remarks.
Like you said, February 29th or March 29th?
Yes, February 29th and then March 4th in Wayland. So that is my comments. The next order of business is public hearing, the extension of hours of Salt Box Kitchen on February 14th, 2020, until 10:30 P.M., with a last call at 9:30. Do you entertain a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Come sit. Good evening, Ms. Elliott.
Thanks very much. How's everybody doing?
Okay.
Great. Yes, I'd love to extend our hours of business by one hour on Valentine's Day coming up, if I may.
Identify yourself.
I'm sorry. Ben Elliott, 54 Westford Road, Concord.
All right, and all the application is complete and in order for this, right? And are there any questions for Mr. Elliott?
Sounds like a fun place to celebrate Valentine's Day.
Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Not yet.
Oh.
But just give us a second. So is there any further discussion on this item, and then I wouldn't entertain a motion.
Move to approve the application for extension of hours at Salt Box Kitchen on February 14th, 2020, until 10:30 P.M., which, with the last call at 9:30 P.M.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Have a great event. The next item on our, on our agenda is consideration of resolution in support of an act for utility transition using renewable energy, also known as the Future Act. This is House Bill 2849 and Senate Bill 1940. You'll recall that this was, we dealt with another resolution at our last meeting, and Bushakupman pointed out that we had not taken that up, so that's why they're here this evening. Before we discuss it, I did receive a, an email. Just have to look it up here. From a citizen, anyway.
Gail Hires.
Gail, Gail Hires? No, I think that's right. Asking us not to support this resolution. She thought that there were, there were other, oh, good, thank you, Jane. Yeah, Gail Hires, you're right. There were other, more important ways to try to accomplish this goal rather, rather than that, like vehicles and the like, so I told her I would. She said she couldn't be here tonight, I told her I would relay that information to you. Please.
This is the line of number seven, sorry.
Huh?
This is the agenda number seven?
It is.
Okay.
Make sure you have a mic close to you, and the little green light is on.
I have a handout here in case anyone, I have a handout here in case.
Tell us who you are, tell us who you are and where you live.
Hi Won Huang, and my address is 122 Minut Road.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am representing Mothers Out Front in support of the resolution for Future Act, which supports the direction that the town has taken with Article 51, to reduce carbon greenhouse gas emissions 80% by 2050. The Future Act is the most comprehensive of several bills before the state legislature that addresses the crisis of gas leaks and our crumbling gas infrastructure. So one big part is it reduces natural gas use by creating a path for gas utilities to transition to renewable thermal utilities. So Massachusetts has one of the oldest pipeline infrastructure, and the cost estimate for fixing pipes over the next 20 years is $9 billion. And if we are to meet our greenhouse gas reduction goals, that would mean that all of these investments will become stranded assets, and their costs will be increasingly borne by ratepayers who have not been able to afford to transition to renewable energy. So it's an, it's environmental justice issue as well. So it makes financial sense to invest in renewable energy infrastructure instead, instead of continuing to fix gas pipes as is. The Future Act also strengthens safety requirements, improves communication and coordination among gas utilities and municipalities, thereby reducing the risk of tragedies like the Merrimack Valley gas explosion occurring elsewhere in our state. In February, early February, many parts of the Future Act was included in the Senate Climate Package, and in the House, it was given an extended report out timeline of June 6th, June 4th, changed from 6th to 4th. So this timing makes the support of Concord Select Board very critical, support for this bill, and we would be joining 13 other towns and cities, including Boston, that would have passed the resolution in support of this bill. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of this, this resolution, and we hope you will support the key principles in this Future Act by passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any questions?
I have a question. I'm noting that neither Tammy Gueva or Mike Barrett are listed, and I'm just, since they're supporting, as supporting, they're not on the.
They're not cosponsors.
They're not cosponsors. Where, do you know where they are on this, because, again?
I know, I was at the hearing at the State House for the Future Bill, and I know Michael Barrett was very supportive.
Okay.
And he's on the Senate side, and I know they've included a lot of the terms in this bill into their Senate Climate Package.
I don't know about Tammy.
Yeah, I just, that's why I'm asking the question, we haven't.
Any other questions? Well, how do you feel about this?
Is there any downside to supporting this?
Well, I think it aligns with the goals of the town.
Right, right, right. I just wanted to know where.
I mean, without, without addressing the pipeline infrastructure, how, how will we get to 80% reduction by 2050?
No, I was at the gas leaks forum that Mothers Out Front and a number of the other municipalities have been part of, and actually asked our local utility, Marcy Reed, the CEO of National Grid, the very question. She wasn't ready for that, to make that answer, and I wasn't necessarily expecting her to. But it's a, you know, putting our notice out is, is in keeping with our responsibilities.
Right.
Linda?
I also agree. I think this generally supports our goals, and this is the House bill, so, you know, it's got a ways to travel.
Yes, exactly.
And so I think at this point, it makes sense for us to do that.
Susan?
I agree.
Jerry? I would, then, I agree too, and Linda, I would be happy to entertain a motion in support of this resolution.
I move that the Select Board go on record in strong support of House Bill 2849, Senate Bill 1940, an act for utility transition to using renewable energy referred to as the Future Act, and urge the legislature to pass the bill in the 2019-2020 session.
Second.
Would you consider an amendment that would include authorizing the chair to write on behalf of the?
Undone support.
So move.
Okay, so.
Second.
So we're voting on the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Now we're voting on the original motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. The next item on our agenda is early voting information of the town clerk. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Kari Maitari, and I'm the town clerk, and I want to let you know about early voting in Concord. Early voting, as you've probably heard, will be taking place between February 24th and 28th for the presidential primary. We will have early voting between the hours of 8:30 and 4:30, Monday through Friday. We have public hearings scheduled for a few of those evenings, so it makes sense to just keep it at 8:30 to 4:30. That will work. We'll move the equipment as needed for the, for the hearing, but I wanted to let you know what will be a little different at early voting this year. We'll be using electronic poll books to check in voters. So that's essentially three laptops that will be connected by ethernet cable that will allow us to use voter lists electronically. We'll print out a barcode with the voter's name, address, party, and precinct, and that will be affixed to the absent, the early voting ballot envelope that looks like this. And so the voter will not need to write their name or address, they will need to sign and date the envelope, and then we'll be able to much more efficiently scan in the information in the town clerk's office. We have to do that every day for each early voting period. The Secretary of State's office is picking up the $1,700 tab for these, they approve of this use. And I should say that absentee voting is happening concurrently to early voting. So while, however, while early voting is happening, voters who come in person to absentee vote will be directed up to the hearing room, which is where early voting will take place.
All right, well, why don't you say just again for the record when, hours, and dates that this early voting will take place?
Yes, early voting will be Monday to Friday, February 24th to 28th, and the hours are from 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And I should also note that this Wednesday, February 12th, 8:00 p.m., is the deadline for voter registration and party enrollment change for the presidential primary.
Right, are there any questions for the clerk?
And the early voting is in, in the Town House here?
It is, in the hearing room, yes.
Great.
Any other questions for the town clerk? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right, the next item on our agenda is discussion of Junction Village tax increment financing. Who's going to join us? Walter, Lane?
Good evening, Walter Rohanian, 488 Elm Street, Concord, developer and manager of the proposed assisted living community at 6X Winthrop Street.
Michael Cuciara, Development Director with the Grantham Group, the developer of the proposed assisted living facility.
Lynn Partridge, Town Assessor.
Greetings, all right. Walter, perhaps you could bring us up to speed on this?
Sure, absolutely, and thank you for meeting with me this evening. So back in 2015 or so, we were a, we had responded to an RFP at the, that was set out by the Concord Housing Development Corporation to decide what to do with a parcel of land at 6X Winthrop Street, and through a competitive process, it was narrowed down that an assisted living would be a great addition to the town and on that piece of land. So we had gone ahead and applied and received a comprehensive permit with the town of Concord in 2017, which allowed us to then apply for state funding. I'm sure everyone remembers, to get to that point, we also needed a commitment for the town, and the town has very generously committed a million dollars of its free cash in addition to a million dollars through CPA to put towards the project. The project is in now for its third round with the state to get an approval of tax credits, and after our second meeting over the summertime, when we met with the state, one of the things they wanted us to do was to narrow down our cost on construction in addition to our operating costs, which ended up bringing us to a meeting with Lane to review the taxes and get an understanding as to what the property would be taxed at. After that, oh.
No, it's fine. Do you want to sort of summarize that meeting or the process you went through in determining?
So, so at that meeting, I think it was September when we finally met, we discussed taxes, where they were going. I was provided some income and expense information and was able to develop a value for the property. We had a second meeting, and I laid out how I came to my valuation, and it became very clear that the taxes would be way above what Grantham had been budgeting as a, as a number. So we, they floated the idea of a pilot, and there's nothing in the law that allows us to do a pilot, this is a taxable entity, so pilots are for non-taxable entities, so that could not work. We talked about a 121A, which is another form of taxation which works with the state, kind of more of an excise tax basis, and the money gets paid to them, and then comes back. That wasn't going to work, so the only available avenue left was a TIF, which is a way for the town to negotiate a tax burden with the developer beforehand, and that's what I believe is going to town meeting, is to vote whether to work on a TIF or not.
And to get us to that point, you know, when we were developing the budget on Christopher Heights of Concord, the assisted living, the proposed assisted living to be developed and built, you know, we used a number that is similar to what we have in our other assisted living communities. So when we actually met with Lane and derived at a number that was more than what the project could afford, we, obviously, were looking to have a TIF as an option. It's important to the project. It really is an operational issue to be able to keep its expenses in line. These are rent-restricted units. Just because the tax has gone up does not mean that we can go forward and increase the rents to the property. In addition, if we actually go back to 2016, the project actually had a task force, which was commissioned by the Select Board, and as part of that, it had recommended a TIF as an option, should the taxes become a burden. And so what we had done at the time with the Concord Housing Development Corporation as part of our development agreement with them, we had put in there that we would look for support for CHDC to actually apply for some sort of tax abatement, whether that be a TIF or a pilot agreement, if that was an option, which, understanding now, is, might not be the best route to go.
Did I include it in the packet late, but include it in the packet?
The one thing I think it's important for the town to know as well is the project has always committed to $75,000 annually to the town, whether it be in both real estate tax and also ground lease to the town, and that commitment hasn't wavered whatsoever. What we're really looking to do is to have long-range viability for this project and to put a mechanism in place that will allow the project to have success in making it so that it's financially viable for the future, and being able to have a tax that it understands going into it is important. In addition to the housing that this creates, and the reason why it's eligible for a TIF is because of the number of jobs that it's going to create. It's going to create, you know, 30 full-time positions within that project, and that's something that the state would use to allow, to approve a TIF, should it get approved at town meeting.
So I include it in your packet in there. I think there are some packets of some of this material that were produced over there on the table, but one is a letter from April 2016 to the Select Board from Greg House, who was the chair of the Junction Village Funding Advisory Committee. That's what you referred to, that the town consider creating a district improvement fund or tax increment financing for the site if additional financial assistance was necessary. And the TIF itself is, tax increment financing is Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 59, which allows for this kind of activity. And would you, Walter, kind of walk, don't need to go into detail, but what is the process that has gone through? that has gone through?
Yep. So what will basically happen is, right now, the land already has a value to it. So the TIF applies to any incremental value that occurs on the land itself. Even though the land has a value to it right now, I think, as everyone realizes, it's currently owned by the CHDC and doesn't pay a tax that goes along with it. But the TIF would apply to any increased value that occurs.
Which you would bring to the...
Which we would be bringing to the table.
It's going to be called Christopher Heights.
Correct.
Despite our attempts to call Junction Village.
Despite the attempts.
All right. And so I just want to give just a little bit of background. This got on the warrant because if we'd have to go to town meeting, it had to be on the warrant. The select board did not go through any kind of rigorous discussion of this because we believe that since the town meeting is the entity that approved the free cash and approved the CPC allocation to Junction Village, it ought to have the ability to weigh on it in this manner. So it's on the warrant, not because we have thought this was a great idea and we wanted it there, but that it was a continuing discussion of the project that the town had picked up a couple of years ago.
Right.
And what was important to me, and I think I may have mentioned this at a previous select board meeting, that I did meet with Walter a few weeks ago, I don't remember when it was, but I think what was very important to me was the underlying finances from the town's point of view were not adversely affected by this, that there was $75,000 set aside for the town. It could be put in any couple of buckets, but that even going out with the application for the TIF, if the town would do it, we would still expect that that $75,000 would be forthcoming to the town, and you just articulated that.
Absolutely.
So, does the board have any questions that it wants to ask, Susan?
Hi. Thank you for that summary.
You're welcome.
Do you, I know you own another, other properties, assisted living, and do you have TIF arrangements with any or all of those?
Yep, we do. We actually have TIF arrangements in two of our communities, and we have pilot agreements in two of our communities as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pilot, does that sound...
It's called a payment in lieu of taxes.
No, just in here.
Okay, sure.
Terry?
Yes, thank you. So thank you for that. Yeah, I have several questions. So, Lane, what is your tax estimate now for approximately how much it would be?
So you mean the valuation that I'm coming up with now?
Well, let me put it this way. The original estimate was the $75,000 that would cover the ground lease and the taxes, maybe half and half or something. So, so say $40,000 or something was your original estimate. What is the estimate for the tax bill?
So I have it would be roughly $187,000.
Okay. And so Walter, you say that your estimate was based on the other four or so properties that you have, but I'm just curious why you used that if they're in other parts of the state, you know, other valuation types?
It's a great question. Hindsight 2020. I wish I would have dealt with this back in 17 and only have gone to the select board once and to town meeting once.
Right.
Lesson learned.
Okay. So if the TIF is adopted at town meeting, what will the direct and indirect staff costs be, if anybody knows? I'm not sure who to direct that to. In terms of like, maybe the RHSO would be involved, Liz Rustine or Marcia or you, Stephen, or I don't know.
So Marcia's here. I'm not, it was permitted through the planning board a little before my time, but I, was there an analysis of municipal costs of the projects?
I think the question is, what would the cost to the town be for the TIF?
Right.
Oh, to pay...
Right, right. For the TIF, we have to fill out forms, we have to send letters. Is it pretty nominal or is there like five hours a week or is there any kind of...
Usually, I'll lay it here. We've been through all these. Yeah, it's, I don't think it'll be, the difficult part's going to be negotiating the TIF. That'll take some time between Stephen and the developer and me to work that all out, but I don't think it's extensive.
Usually we'd put it on the developer, prepare any necessary submissions, and then we would file them accordingly.
Okay.
I thought, sorry, Marcia, I thought there's, she was asking a different question.
No, that's another good question, but all right.
So there wouldn't be any measurable additional cost borne by the town? Is that the point?
Not, not in terms of administrative cost, no.
After, after negotiating, okay. So what would happen if the TIF agreement is not adopted by town meeting or not approved by the state?
So if it gets adopted at town meeting, it will get adopted by the state because it meets its threshold of creating jobs. If it's not adopted at town meeting, the project's in jeopardy. It cannot financially support a $187,000 real estate tax bill.
I have a question. What is the length of, is a TIF a perpetual thing or is it a set number of years?
Yep. So the TIF can go anywhere between five and 20 years. We'd be looking, obviously, for a 20-year TIF to make sure that it has the longevity of its known real estate expense. If we also remember, is the project is going to be deed restricted in perpetuity? So it's going to need as long as it possibly can to understand what its expenses are. So some questions might be, well, what happens after the 20 years? Because you can't just renew a TIF. That's an important question, I think the town understands. You know, at that point, it will be taxed at whatever the value is. So then the question is, okay, well, how can the project afford it in 20 years if it can't afford it today?
Right.
So if you remember, is just like we pay in our own mortgages, we pay down principal. So the project at that time would refinance its current mortgage, which will be substantially less than what it is the day that it opens. It's nearly an $8 million mortgage we'll be having. By the time 20 years go by, it'll be significantly less, which will free up cash flow and will allow it to be able to pay its expenses that it's allocated towards.
Ken, were you finished?
We're set.
Yeah, okay. The, the original Mass One Stop pro forma that was filed, when I looked at it earlier today, re-looked at it, I should say, earlier today, it looked like there was $40,000 for the ground lease and $40,000 for tax set aside at that time?
I think it's 75 in both, 75 total, excuse me.
Okay. Well, the one I was looking at anyway, and...
And it's the case for the 75 that it's a decision that'll have to be made later as to the allocation of...
Once we understand what the tax is, then the ground lease payment will be, for example, just using a round number, let's say hypothetically, if the real estate tax with the TIF ended up being $65,000, then $10,000 would go to CHDC as part of the ground lease.
Say that again?
The remaining $10,000 would go to CHDC as part of the ground lease to get to the $75,000.
Say the whole statement again?
Sure. Hypothetically, let's just say that the TIF comes in and its tax bill ends up being $65,000 with the TIF. The remaining $10,000, because the project can support 75, the remaining $10,000 would go towards the ground lease to CHDC to come up with that total of $75,000.
So obviously, the agreement hasn't been executed at this point.
No.
And what you just said suggests that there'll be a certain amount awarded if approved.
So there's a TIF negotiation that will happen between the town and, and us as the developer. We don't know what that amount is yet until we determine a final value on the project. That's to be determined.
Okay. Is there a, sorry, may I continue?
Go ahead.
Is there an updated pro forma?
There is. We're actually filing a full one-stop that's going, going to occur on February 21st, and at that time, a copy will be delivered to Mr. Crane.
Okay. And will it be a public document at that point?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. And Lane, I guess, one other question, just because I think not everyone in the community is familiar with TIF. So it's for this lot only?
Correct. It only applies to the, basically to the project itself, because it's the project that's creating the jobs. The only reason why it gets approved is because, because of the jobs. Even though the greater good of the project is the housing as well that goes along with it, the, you know, out of the 83 units, 43 are, you know, considered very low income. It's 60% or less, some are at 30% of AMI. The project and the reason why it can qualify for a TIF under the state is because of the job creation.
It falls under the Economic Development and Senate Program.
Correct.
Correct, correct.
Not housing.
The Mass Office of Business Development, myself, some members from the town, a member from CHDC, Liz Rust, and RHSO, had a conference call with the Mass Office of Business Development, our regional director for this area, and he walked through the steps of the TIF.
And Lane, the question I, you know, there, obviously, there, the new pro forma, I assume, has higher costs than was indicated in this one.
Definitely.
But there also has been an additional home award amount of money that's gone into this. And so now this would be another source of support, in essence, to help this project be...
Hopefully, finally get a state approval for the tax credits, which will get us a shovel on the ground at some point.
Sure. So to help this project be successful.
Correct.
So Lane, I know that some of these TIF agreements have, and this may be too early because you haven't sat down to do the negotiations, but I understand that some of these TIF agreements have built in some kind of, I guess I'll use the word protection, or some kind of statements that guarantee that Grantham is going to execute the full program in terms of the construction and getting the program off the ground and so forth. So, and I know that there are a number of projects in Massachusetts that have built in those statements. Not that you're not proceeding with a good faith effort, but in terms of protecting the town, I think that would be important.
Sure. We can, we can certainly put that in. The other thing, my understanding of this, and it may be different than yours, Walter, but we're going to, the TIF will be a percentage. It will not be a fixed number. It's going to be a percentage of value that you're, that you would have grant as an exemption. So it can change. It'll also change with tax rates as well. So it's not like 75 for the next 20 years. It's going to move. So that's going to have to be in consideration when we do the TIF as well.
Sure.
But it would go up no difference in the tax rate for...
Correct. But the values can also change too. If, if, you know, HUD's values change and allows a much higher number, then that gets considered in the income approach and, and then the value can, can fluctuate as well too. It doesn't get fixed today and is the same for 20 years.
Will there be a proposed TIF agreement on file somewhere before the town meeting? Because I think it's referred to in the article that it's supposed to be on file at the town clerk's office, if I'm not mistaken?
I mean, once we have a draft...
So when do, when will you be able to come up with the final?
Negotiate.
Whenever you want to get together and do it.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's very important to get it done.
I think the comment in the, in the warrant article related to the TIF article, or the TIF, was a TIF application being on file with the town clerk, not the actual TIF itself. Because in order to get the actual, you have to go through the steps of the state in order to have the actual official, you know, document.
You're right.
So it would be just an application which...
Do we have that?
We don't have it currently, but it will be available, very much so.
I did include an application in your, in your packet, what it looks like.
And I think it's worth reminding, remembering that the point of the project, ultimately at the end of the day, what it delivers to the town, we're talking about 83 units that will be on the subsidized housing inventory in perpetuity for 40B purposes. So that's a very important thing. In terms of hooks that the town has into the project, you know, affordability around the 40B is built into our 40B comp permit already.
Right.
So the merits of the project notwithstanding, this is a shift of tax value for the town, and in that sense, it is a public-private partnership. And I think towns that have these arrangements, in Massachusetts anyway, many towns have done a good job of making all the specifics of this arrangement and the progress being made on, on the revenues for TIF on their websites. And I think Worcester has a good one to look at and, and over.
The town website.
Yes, and I would recommend looking at those again before negotiating, because I think...
I think that's a great idea. And also, I think it's extremely important to get the arrangement as close to finalized as we can.
Right.
Before we get to town meeting, so the town knows exactly what it's being asked to, asked to support. Right, so the process of this, this will be heard at the public hearing on the 24th, here in the, here in the hearing room. And as I said at the beginning of this, the select board hasn't taken a position on this at all. We just wanted to ensure that it would be in front of the town for the town to actually consider at town meeting. So some are following the public hearing on the 24th. As it is the case for all warrant articles, the select board will be going through the process of making recommendations to town meeting. So we'll have another opportunity to discuss that. Did you have, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Any other question? Excuse me?
I would have a question. Did, were you asking, is the public having questions?
No, I was asking if the Housing Corporation had, had a question. Any other comments? Should we take questions from the public on this?
I think it makes sense to.
Okay, Dory, it looks like so. If you have a comment, Dory, come on up and let's hear it. Remembering that I don't want, this, we're not going to have a debate about this, so...
We're not debating, but I do have a question.
Question.
I do have a question. My question is, can you, Lane, at all, give us an idea, when this is worked out, what would be the shortfall in our tax money that's, that comes in each year?
So shortfall, I don't agree with that, sorry. It's, this is foregoing getting taxes, so there's no impact to the town as far as that goes. So we are giving away about two, two cents on the tax rate.
Okay, so that it...
In, in new growth. And, and new growth, yes. Well, no, the new growth is separate. That would be the... But the first year new growth as well, but it's zero now. Right.
But what I'm trying, and I, I don't know the numbers at all, but could we use some round numbers? If, if the town expects to take in $100 every year in its taxes and it's taking in less, would that be correct to say that if, if Grantham would be, if, if the town is built on having $187,000 from, from Grantham, if it doesn't come in, then there's $187,000 that needs to be made up? Or am I wrong in that?
I guess, so because it's non-taxable now, anything that, that is collected as a result of this development would be new revenue for the town?
Okay.
Now, I think where I would maybe play that string out would be, well, if something else went there and paid full freight, what would it be? But because of the restrictions on the parcel for affordable housing, not anything could go there, and so it really is not a straight, you know, up or down analysis. And so I think it's a little more complicated.
Dory, the way I would want to answer that, because it's a question that I tried to say a couple of times.
Okay.
If it was the case, we went to town meeting with the expectation the town would get $75,000 and we would use it for ground lease or taxes, whatever it is. If the TIF is arranged, and it won't be, I hope, that we don't get 75, then I think I'm with you, there's a shortfall, right?
Okay, all right, okay.
Right. But I think, thinking it was 187 was a tax bill and we're only going to get 75 as a shortfall, I don't think, the town never expected to get anything but $75,000.
Okay. That's what they expected. That does help to clarify.
And that's...
Well, I would say with Proposition 2 and 1/2, it's never a shortfall.
Yeah.
We, we, we collect this 2 and 1/2% more than we had a levy of last year. So we're losing some growth dollars out of that, but there's no loss of money. And if you add significant new properties to the tax base, it reduces the tax rate slightly, but the town will still have the same functioning budget and levy.
Does that answer your question?
Thank you very much.
Are there any additional questions?
No, but I hope when you do the negotiating that we'll have a chance to find out what it is.
I know, I'm just asking the rest of the audience if there are any additional questions. Right, seeing none, then I think we're ready to move on. Thank you all very much for coming, I appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
The next item on our agenda this evening is the StarMet reuse planning committee and two-two-two-nine Main Street Committee. Hi, everybody.
Can you?
Do we want Bruce?
Yeah, Bruce can come up.
That's the one that's not in the package.
It was in the adjustment, no? Okay, well, there's copies over there, we'll get them.
Oh, good.
Let everybody come in and get settled and. I know.
He also has that red light thing that means there's too much going on today.
Good evening. Thanks for coming, please identify yourselves. And I suspect in addition to y'all that there might be other members of your committee in the audience. So after you've identified yourselves, maybe you could ask them to stand up and identify themselves.
Yeah, hi, thanks for hearing us. I'm Gary Kleiman, fifty-seven Central Street, and I'm a co-chair of the Nuclear Metals Inc. StarMet Reuse Planning Committee.
I'm Pam Rockwell, eighteen-ten Main Street, and I'm the chairman of the two-two-two-nine Main Street Oversight Committee.
I'm Christopher Smith, I'm EPA's remedial project manager for this superfund site that we're gonna be discussing.
Hi, I'm Bruce Thompson, and I'm the project coordinator, basically the general contractor that's gonna be doing all the work at the site.
Terrific, and are there other members of your committee?
Well, co-chair of the reuse committee.
You. Okay. Well, glad you're here, this is a very important topic. As everybody knows, we've been dealing with two-two-two-nine StarMet for a long time. And it's coming to a different phase, cleanup is coming along quite well. And the select board put together this reuse committee to help us think about how we could inform the EPA about potential uses of the land that would guide the way they would attend to the cleanup. Do I have that half-right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So please.
Thanks, so by way of providing you an update, we thought it was also a good time to bring in Pam Rockwell, who's the chair, she said, of the two-two-nine Main Street Committee. Because as we got halfway through our processes, you'll see in the timeline, the consent decree was signed, so the cleanup is actually beginning. So there's actually reports and updates from both of us.
And Pam's on the reuse committee as well.
Yes, right, she is also a member of our reuse committee. And the last name on here is Bruce Thompson, who introduced himself. And brought Bruce along just because I am not as well-versed in a lot of the details that you may have questions about, so he's here to answer questions. So we will do our best.
So before we get started, so we do have connection issues with that TV, so the technician works on it, aware of it, but first, like, four members, if you want to slide down, we can get up to you, actually, Steve.
Sure, yeah, it'd be great to arrange yourself so that you can see the screen. I don't expect you to be able to read all of this, this is kind of small text, but.
We have two copies in our package.
Exactly.
We do, twice.
Exactly, what I was gonna say is that, you know, because I know time is limited, I'm not gonna present everything that I shared with you. I did share all of these slides in advance. The public may not have seen all of them, but I'm gonna just focus a little bit on this executive summary, which has really all of the key points that I think we wanted to get to tonight in terms of attention from the select board. You know, you're familiar with the charge, and I think that, you know, the key issue that we're here tonight is to provide you with where we're at in our process in terms of coming up with a, what I'll call a master plan concept for the site redevelopment. Within that, there's still a lot of room for detail and, you know, finer resolution understanding. But we'd like to get your sort of go-ahead notional support for the master plan that we've come up with, so that we can proceed, so that EPA and their contractors can proceed with the cleanup in a timely way, or developing a plan for the cleanup, and so that we can do our due diligence and answer the rest of our questions in time to deliver you a report. I won't go through all of these detailed points in terms of the key issues, but, you know, essentially, there are still some decisions outside of this master concept, master plan concept, in terms of mixed use versus, you know, different use clusters, what the town's recreational facility needs are, the specific intensity of development on different parcels within the site, and, you know, how we'll do our due diligence probably over the summer. But I also wanted to leave you with four points that we'll come back to at the end of the presentation. Hopefully during the Q and A, we can get your select board input on these last four points. We want to make you aware of some risk communication issues that we've come across that we think it's important for the select board and the town to address head-on before we get into, say, a town meeting warrant article where we're asking the town to take action on this site. So we think, you know, it's important for you to understand some of these communication issues. The, again, getting your clearance and approval on the notional concept that we have, and I'll show you in a minute. Understanding what the town's needs are in order to proceed with an ownership transition, if, at the end of the day, we would like to see the town take ownership of this parcel, which I think that's sort of where we're all heading, once there's cleanup and stuff like that. You know, if the town's gonna take ownership, what else do you need to know? Because as part of the remedial design, we're gonna start working towards that. And so if there's stuff that we can find answers for you as part of our report this December, we'd like to start working on that along with the due diligence. So just understanding what your needs will be to, in order for the town to feel good about going forward and taking ownership, understanding that list would be great. And then the last thing, our reuse plan, you know, the reuse committee, in coming up with a concept or two concepts that we, you know, wanna put forward for the town, it's important for us to understand how this fits in the larger context of other town development projects. For example, Peabody. If you're gonna put a senior center in at the Peabody School, when, you know, after the middle school is built, well, it does make sense to put a senior center out on the western edge of town. If you're gonna be reshuffling, you know, affordable housing into the site at Peabody, maybe that would affect or impact what kinds of affordable housing or other types of housing we might wanna put on the StarMet site. So understanding how municipal uses and other parcels in town are gonna be developed or might be developed, or what sort of strategies you have for that would be important for us to understand, to the extent you know, so that as we put together a reuse plan. So those are sort of the key issues, and we can come back to this at the end. But I know we have limited time, so I just wanna.
So this is the timeline so far. And to point out the risk communication issues, the risk has been reduced dramatically at this site already. There was sludge removed from the holding basin before it was a superfund. In two thousand and one, it was declared a superfund, and immediately, the site was fenced and areas like the holding basin and the landfill were covered. There were barrels removed, beryllium between the cooling pond that were dug up and removed. There was DU barrels and metal that were inside the buildings that were shipped away. There were flammables removed by the EPA after a fire. And in two thousand and one, after the site was abandoned, they began removing the buildings. The buildings are gone, down to the foundations. In two thousand and fifteen, they had a record of decision that said that, according to EPA, this site needed to be cleaned up to a residential standard and the drinking water at the site needed to meet the drinking water standards. And that's the decision that was made that started the funding process. Immediately, organic treatment of the groundwater began. They're doing pump and treat now, as we speak, protecting water that's going under the Asavet River towards wellheads on the other side. In two thousand and nineteen, a consent decree, that's the contract between the principal responsible parties and the federal government to fund the cleanup, was signed. And as of January, the end of January in two thousand and twenty, money is in place and the countdown has started for an eighteen-month design for the design plan to be developed. So in the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-six frame, we're expecting this design plan to come out, we're expecting the remediation to get started, and we're expecting that the cleanup will be progressing in the next few years. By two thousand and twenty-six, it's possible that we could have a site ready to develop. Some important milestones along that, that are that in the next two months, they're gonna be coming up with a plan to do the investigation that they need to do and start the study. By April, we should have a point where they kind of need to know what we might wanna develop at the site, what sort of areas will be used, what sort of areas will be left untouched. And that's basically the plan so far. And then in eighteen months, they're gonna wanna have a remedial design. And at that point, they're gonna wanna know who has institutional, who's going to be responsible for the institutional controls at the site, who's gonna make sure the wellheads aren't disturbed, that there aren't drinking water wells built at the site, and that the caps are not disturbed and things like that at the site.
And just for the audience's benefit, why do they need to know what our needs are going to be? What does that, what does that change or not change?
There's two things, one would be how they're going to restore the site at the end. Are they just gonna dump dirt and plant trees and make hillsides and things that we might then wanna rip up if we were going to use the site in particular ways? Even what's gonna be flat for a parking lot and what's not, what needs to be filled, what could be used for basement for a building, things like that. That's sort of a longer-term use. But the other part of that is, they need to know that there is going to be an owner who will enforce the institutional controls at the site and make sure that nobody puts a goalpost through the cap on the top of the holding basin or, you know, decides to reshape the landscape in a way that changes the water flow or disturbs a remedy that's in place.
Actually, ma'am, it's not just that we need, it's not just that we need somebody to enforce that. We have to have an owner of record to sign a notice of activity and use limitation. That's the actual form of deed restriction. So when we go to a ninety-five percent design, I have to have title evidence to give to EPA with our package that says, here's the owner that's going to execute this document. If we don't have that, then we don't do the activity and use limitation. And if we don't have the activity and use limitation, we don't finish the work, right? And then we can't turn it over to anybody to use.
Let's come back to this specific legal issue.
Can I just ask, who is the owner now? Or we don't know.
The owner is still listed as StarMet AMI. That company hasn't filed anything with the Secretary of State here for eight or nine years. I can't find the address for them.
So they've been abandoned.
Yeah.
So I can add a little bit to that from a tax point of view. From what our research has been, they don't exist anymore. They went through bankruptcy and they're gone. There's no such thing as StarMet anymore. We're carrying them on the record, because we have nobody else to do it. So that is one point that needs to be settled. There is a tax title on the property as well, back taxes.
All right. So, you know, not so much the legal issue, but, you know, the first part of Pam's response, you know, why do we need to know for the, you know, so that you can design the cleanup? That's actually the core reason that our committee, the reuse committee, was formed, right? Is to understand, so that the cleanup can proceed. What are our desired end uses, so that the cleanup can be designed to meet those uses? So the second timeline that I wanted to share is more, what is this eighteen-month window that you charged our committee with? Is, in order to help the cleanup happen, you know, you charged us to sort of help the town understand what the possibilities would be. We formulated some development principles, we've held public forums. You know, we started gathering public input and formulating reuse concepts, this master plan concept that I wanna share with you. And we're obviously meeting with you now, but right in the middle of our eighteen-month timeline, the consent decree came out and sort of kick-started the cleanup process. So in addition to the normal committee timeline that you see before us and trying to get you some due diligence on these scenarios and a report by December, there are also some important decisions that I wanna pass off to Pam to decide, because, described to you, because, you know, in the middle of our planning process, there are a couple of requirements that come in.
So the first thing that's happening right now, the first thing that's happening right now is that there's a design for the remedial design. So there's a work plan for the remedial designs coming out in March that's going to include this sort of testing and preparation for the remedial design. These are just, you know, testing products to be used and the scenarios that will be used for the cleanup. The most notable on this one is actually number four, bedrock one-four dioxide flow and stabilization testing. I get a lot of questions about the risk at the site and new risk at the site. What happens if somebody discovers there's a new problem? This was a new problem. Somebody noticed that in some other models for developing organics in groundwater, that you had to worry about the small amounts that might be sequestered in bedrock. And they just added this, just like that. There was no question, there was no long discussion about it. It's like, okay, here's something new, let's just add it and do it and take care of it. And this is one of the other things that's being tested for. They was the principal responsible parties and the contractor who is doing the design. The advantage in this particular cleanup is that we have two principal responsible parties who are private companies, and then the other principal responsible party is the Army. And the Army is paying most of the bills. And the other two principal responsible parties are very liable for anything that might be found in the future, but not paying most of the bills. So they are doing the project management and, in fact, doing a really good job of anticipating anything that might be a problem in the future, so they can get it done now, because they don't want it coming up later. So that has been a great advantage. And this is another example of the many examples of things they have discovered early on and changed the plan to add that to the system.
But it's also EPA, I mean.
And EPA.
And, I mean, I think that was a good example you gave before the meeting. Bruce was telling me that, you know, they do a five-year check-in, even after superfund sites are cleaned up. And if science has advanced and they discover new things, they will go back at the five-year check-in and check and see if that's a problem, and if it is, institute correction. So we don't have to worry about, you know, future surprises, or if they do come up. We have people. And so I just wanna note that the red text in here is different than what I sent you weeks ago. Bruce gave me some corrections to some of the ways I had tried to, you know, characterize what are very technical and very complex tests that are being done. I tried to simplify them and I didn't do a great job, so now I've fixed those. So use this version, not what I sent you two weeks ago.
So this is the plan over the next eighteen months. They'll be doing a preliminary remedial design, thirty percent design. They probably won't do an intermediate design, even though it's in the system, they'll probably jump right to the pre-final ninety-five percent remedial design. That remedial design, that's when they need to know when there's an owner. That's, and then the remedial design will be finalized. Hopefully, in eighteen months, it'll go out for comment and we will all discuss it. And then they'll start doing the actions, the cleanup, for the site. And we're expecting that to be like six years, if all goes well.
So that's the cleanup. Now, back to the reuse and our committee work and the questions that we have for you. You know, I've sent you a lot of this information, I won't go through in detail, but we did establish some principles for the cleanup, things like trying to achieve multiple town needs, you know, making sure it's financially viable, not increasing our tax liabilities as a town. Potential uses, we've had a forum, we've got a lot of public input on what some of the very specific uses that the town would like to see at this site. I wanna jump straight into this concept of a use typology and then talk to you about the master plan, redevelopment, master concept, and how it would basically phase our use definition. We can start with sort of vague, this typology of uses as is appropriate for cleanup, and then how we can do further due diligence and narrow down what the more refined uses might be in the future. So first, this typology that we came up with. Essentially, you know, there are two or three different types of indoor uses. I don't think we need to get as specific at this stage as to whether we're talking about a pizza restaurant or, you know, a movie theater. Commercial, light industrial spaces are still gonna have the sort of the same requirements, no matter what type of commercial use it is, or what type of retail use it is, what type of light industrial. It's still gonna require, you know, basically a slab foundation, you know, that is what the contractor needs to know in order to prepare that portion of the parcel. If you're talking about passive recreation, trails with trees and things like that, that requires a different type of cleanup. So we've broken it down into sort of these three indoor uses and these four outdoor uses that may have different types of use requirements for purposes of cleanup. And then we've worked that, using that typology, we've come up with this sort of, what we're calling, you know, a master planning concept, master reuse concept. And we believe as a committee that, you know, almost the entire eastern half of the site, which is mostly wetlands, has a large sphagnum bog, has a number of trails that are already sort of existing around it, and probably would not be ideal for redevelopment of sort of commercial or light industrial purposes anyway. Probably will remain, would be best suited to remain as more or less open space. There are some cleanup that is required on that half of the site, but in general, the committee feels like we probably wouldn't touch that part. committee feels like we probably wouldn't touch that part anyway in terms of redevelopment. There's already sort of a ring road around the parcel A1, so we see that as an appropriate, you know, concept to keep in mind, basically formalize a ring road around that central parcel and then have two or three future potential development parcels around the periphery, A2, A3, and A4, that could be developed now, could be developed in the future, could be left alone as additional open space. So we haven't narrowed down what specific uses we think are appropriate in A2, A3, A4 or within A1, but this is sort of the master concept that we think the committee is sort of in agreement around, you know, a consensus view of how redevelopment would proceed with the select board sign off. We think this is an important thing to convey to EPA and DeMaximus in their March timeframe and to meet their March deadline of getting this thirty percent remedial design report done. And then we can continue doing due diligence over some additional, more specific concepts over the summer, go back for public outreach, get, you know, them to weigh in on some of the issues I had on the executive summary slide and develop a more refined set of scenarios that we could do due diligence over the summer and include in a report.
Gary, what does that say wastewater treatment?
Yeah, I mean, one possibility is that wastewater treatment for whatever goes in A1, you know, you you could do a buried septic system somewhere within A1 or maybe the A3 parcel. You'll see when I do some brainstorming, one of the concepts uses exactly that, but that was just, you know, one notation. The the general concept isn't specific as to what would go in A2, A3, or A4. It's really just, you know, more intensive development in A1 with a ring road around it, open space on the eastern half of the parcel, and then the three parcels on the western edge could be redeveloped now or over time.
Are there any sections of this of the map here that absolutely would go to one use or, in other words, if the cleanup itself would designate a use or limit the use?
Well, limiting the use. I mean, you see area D in there. I mean, that is clearly likely to be for drainage, you know, it's it's wetlands area that, or it's not wetlands, it's a cooling pond, right? But I mean...
It's going to end up being a drainage.
Yeah, I mean, the site has to drain somehow. So that is, right. So D and north of that, you know, to Route 62, is likely to remain some form of drainage of the larger parcel. And obviously, the sphagnum bog and, you know, is wetlands and needs to remain as wetlands.
Area B is the holding basin and that is going to get a cap on it. So you are not going to want to build structures on top of that. You could put a nice parking lot on top of that and hopefully that will be strong enough that if we drive dump trucks across it, it's not going to damage it. That that would be something we would want.
So that would be an area that its previous use would designate, would designate?
Designate, it's not going to have a building on top of it.
But even that could support some variation in what types of uses could be on it. It could be just, you know, flat grass, it could be a parking lot, it could be, yeah. So these are not, you know, specific concepts, but just sort of more brainstorming. We have three concepts. Just to show you how that master concept could play out three different ways, one suggestion from members of our committee was, you know, an indoor multipurpose community space, sort of a a community rec center that might have senior center and some municipal space as well, and then, you know, soccer and baseball fields on the outside of the ring road. But again, the consistent with the master concept, the whole eastern edge would be more habitat preservation, open space. This is modeled on a similar development in East Boulder, Colorado, of similar size and scale. Another concept, again, sticking with this concept, is office or medical building. So this concept has a three hundred thousand square foot office medical building that roots that A1 parcel. And then again, maybe housing clusters, maybe a couple of fields, so a variety of things that could be in the outer perimeter on the western edge. And then a third concept is a mixed-use development, you know, again, a three hundred, three hundred fifty square foot set of buildings, maybe multiple stories with a little bit of a more developed park, you know, within the A1 parcel, so more intensive development within A1, but then leaving A2 and A4 undeveloped, perhaps having a sports field available over a leach field. This goes back to Terry's point, the notation on there. In this concept, we put a leach field for the the mixed-use development outside in area A3. So those are the concepts. And then I think I would go back to the executive summary slide to open it up for Q and A because, you know, basically what we're looking for from the select board, in addition to just sort of getting general thoughts on our interim, you know, master plan concept, you know, I want to see if there are any questions from the board, whether you know now or whether you need to take some time to think about what your needs are in terms of eventually taking ownership of the property and whether you want more detail on the risk communication issues we've come across and, you know, how you propose we sort of better put our reuse plan in the context of other town developments like the middle school project or what you may have planned for Harvey Wheeler or other sites. So I'll I'll pause there, see if you have questions.
Anything else to add?
I think we're good.
So I'll I'll start. There are liens against the property. So what happens to those liens?
You want to talk?
I'm not exactly sure what will happen. I know that that's a process that will have to be worked through with EPA's attorneys and Department of Justice attorneys.
That's a real impediment for the town taking any...
Right. My sense is definitely that they they could, they could be dealt with if the town was interested in taking ownership of the property.
So in past...
There's a couple of different types of liens, right? So there's what they call the federal, the mega lien, which is, I think, seventeen-plus million dollars by EPA that was against the property, in my opinion, is that that was there, that that's basically overcome by events by the funding of this consent decree that we're under now. Because that was to basically force Starment back in the day to try to clean up their property. So they're gone, other entities are in place, money's in place, so I think EPA, DOJ could be persuaded to drop that. There's a couple of other, you know, your own tax lien, that's up to you all. And then I think the other ones are, there's there's some with some banks, but their collateral, basically, we put in a landfill when we took the buildings down. So but somebody has to negotiate with them.
But they have to be...
Yeah, it's not us.
...away.
Right. And and their client's gone now too. So, you know, but but yet...
Who who is responsible for doing that?
It's not on our plate, I will say that. I think it's a process of if Concord wants the property, they probably have to engage with, you know, your own counsel or outside counsel and try to go through that process. Somebody's got to deal with EPA and DOJ. It's not an ugly discussion, but I think that's that's a hurdle to go through.
Sounds like one of your needs, better understanding the process for resolving liens.
I mean, the town, the town is not going to, not going to take ownership of property when it's facing the kind of liens that are on the property now. The EPA one, I'm pretty confident about that, but I don't, not confident, but I know, I think I know how that would be dealt with, right? I'm not sure I understand how the others would be dealt with. If we don't own the property, do we have any standing to even talk to the lien holders?
Right.
Right, or some hook you go through if you took the property and then you go to release those, but you don't want to do that without knowledge?
Yeah, yeah.
I believe that you can be talking to EPA about getting that done. And I want to point out that we don't want somebody else owning this property because in Concord, what we have done to get this cleanup off the ground, to get it to be a superfund site, to get the buildings removed off the property so that they're they're not, it's not just a giant landfill on our property, so that there's not some other nuclear industry that has moved in that is that is contributing even more to a problem at this site. We've accomplished a lot in the last twenty years trying to make this happen. And this is a really valuable place. And we are, we are probably the most responsible people out there to be able to maintain this site after it's gone. And we do it without the kind of liability that Bruce's bosses have for this property. They will have that that liability in perpetuity for something new that might be discovered or from for the contaminants that are at the site. We won't have that as new owners of the site. And that's, that makes us in a position to force somebody else to do something to it, to be aware of what's going on. So there's a real value to us being the owners of the site, even if we don't redevelop it immediately.
No, no argument, but...
Other than resolution of the liens, are there other things that...
Well, I have a question on the timeframe. It sounded like we have, within eighteen months, we have to make this decision of, because you need an owner of record by the end of 2021?
It would be really convenient to have an owner of record in 2021. That makes the remedial design complete. They have to sort of know who is going to be responsible for...
I mean, that gives us basically one year or less to go to town, you know, we'd have to go to town meeting a year from now to make that deadline, pretty much.
But we already went to town meeting to give you the authority to go ahead and...
All right, all right.
You have the authority to do it without going back to town meeting.
Okay, so the liens are one, the liens are one thing, clear title, so we don't wind up with, you know, that's another thing that's on my mind. I liked, I liked this presentation a lot. I particularly liked it, you know, when I went to some of the public hearings, it really got down in the weeds. I like the way you've gathered all the information up and tried to make a high-level kind of talk, because I think that makes a great deal of of sense outlining those areas. And other discussions down the road will determine what happens there. So that was really glad to see that.
And are you comfortable with us sort of, if if the committee, we have a meeting on Friday, but if we're still, you know, committed to that sort of general approach, can we share that with EPA and DeMaximus officially as, you know, what the town is thinking at a preliminary stage so that they can complete their thirty percent design?
Well, I just, I don't get to the side, but I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand exactly what you're asking me.
Just sort of making sure there's no red flags raised by this approach, you know, that we are thinking basically open space on half, ring road, you know, in the center with more intensive development in the center and then potential development around the periphery, because that's going to affect the way they start designing the cleanup. At this point, it's only a thirty percent...
Can you put the map back up?
Yeah.
Actually, I would...
Oh, I can see in the window.
Right.
It's a little blurry, but...
So so if you look at the the map here, here's one of the examples, the the ring road with the blue buildings in it, that's the old factory space. And so the idea is that almost all the plans we are coming up with would develop that as buildings within that that footprint.
That would be the indoor space.
That would be indoor space. And the question would be of the outdoor spaces. Area A3 is an area that's well impacted by their cleanup, and so they're going to be digging up and having to re-landscape that. So putting something there like a septic system, putting something, there are various things that putting there that that you could develop. You could even potentially develop a road that connects to Forest Ridge Road, but that would involve a lot of other, you know, it's a private way, so there's, there's a lot of question there, but that might be a second entrance to that site. Area A4 is not going to be touched by the cleanup itself. They're not going to be using that for fill, they're not going to be clearing it for us. So if we wanted to say that was going to be housing or that was going to be sports fields or that was going to be something like that, that is a discussion we can have long after the cleanup is done, long after we're, you know, just what kind of housing and what sort of thing? That's, that's something very modular. Area A2 on this site is an area that could potentially, it's a big hillside right along Route 62, that could be used for fill for the site. So there's a question there about whether we would want to develop that, because if we want to put buildings or housing or commercial buildings there, then having them use that for fill would be a real advantage because they could leave it flat for us, they could leave it in a position. From our stud, from our discussions with people, nobody wants to lose the trees along Route 62, so not all the hillside would get removed. But having it flattened a little bit, having it be a flat accessway between Minuteman Arc and whatever facilities we put in A1 is also not a unreasonable thing, but that's actually a decision that they would like to know. Can we use this for fill? Because they probably would want to use that for fill if...
A2 and A4 in particular, I think we heard sort of mixed messages at the public forum. Some people are more in favor of more open space and more intensive development in some areas and leaving other areas. So whether or not we develop A2 and A4 or whether, you know, A2 in particular because of the fill possibility, but right now, it's a, you know, undisturbed forest area. So why would you, you know, as part of this superfund cleanup, why would you knock down the one part of the parcel that is, you know, has not been impacted? So it's a question that I think, I believe we should go back to the public and get, you know, more public input rather than making a decision unilaterally. But I don't think that for the cleanup purposes, they need to know that until late summer. I think...
I don't, we don't need it, just just to be clear, our first set of documents that goes in this in March is work plans. And we do a bunch of investigations. And when we, including our community groups and EPA and the DDP are all satisfied, we have enough information, we'll go to design. This one issue with the A2 and the backfill, that that came out of some brainstorming I did with my team. And just to put this in context, our remedy here, we're looking at somewhere in the order of eighty-three thousand cubic yards of soil and sediment to dig out and remove. So maybe better put about six thousand truckloads. And then those are going to go to probably a train, transload station, and then to Idaho or Utah or Texas, which are the only available places for radiologically impacted soil to go. So we're going to make holes in the ground and we have to bring back another six thousand truckloads of clean if we bring it from off-site. We can get most of the fill out of A2 if we were to use it. So my notion was if that was a redevelopment interest, that's a win-win, because then I don't need to bring six thousand truckloads from somewhere else in Massachusetts through Maynard or Concord to get here. So that's, that's why it's important, I think, to at least, would you all consider that?
I have some other questions, but I'd like to defer, so if people have other questions.
I know that, Gary, you explained this before, but what's the topography of the, of the site? And we had talked, I think in the public hearings, it came up about whether or not to level, and that's what you're talking about with the fill, right, in the A2?
Yeah, you can see some of the gradients there. A2 has a very steep hill. And then it drops down. A3 is actually a low point, and then it rises back up a little bit on A4. And Black Birch is actually even a little bit higher, which you can see down there in the lower corner. A1 is a pretty flat area because that's where the building was. But then it drops down into those, the cooling pond, you know, that is basically how the whole site drains out, you know, and the sphagnum bog also is a low point. It's flat, that striped area, and then rises steeply towards the edge, yeah, towards the eastern edge.
So you need, you would like to have this decision for the thirty percent design, is that correct?
It would be, it would be helpful, because here's how it goes. If I don't have, if I don't have input from the town, we'll have to figure it out. And we'll assume that we're leaving that that hillside intact and I'll make plans to bring in fill. And when I look at restoration, we'll, you know, if we dig up an area, we end up putting it back and restoring it, grassing, trees, whatever else. So that's kind of my status quo. Anything else that I can get from the reuse committee, from the town, as we're doing our planning process that I can integrate where basically this, using onsite fills are money-saving to us? So that's good. And we would do it that way. So kind of if I get no input, we'll proceed.
And it's good for the area in terms of traffic mitigation and all kinds of other things.
Yeah, that, that's, that's certainly one of the things I'm concerned about. I mean, we did, when we shipped out all the buildings, we had our own traffic control plan. We don't move trucks when it's rush hour, bus hour, anything else. But that's constrained. That means our digging process is going to take a longer time. So we're going to work with it regardless, because I don't have, I have this agreement with Chris and EPA and DOJ, we don't have a choice, right? We're going to go do this. But I think there's an opportunity to work with Concord if you are serious about, you know, taking the property, redeveloping it. There's things, you say you want to build, build where the foundation of the building was, fine, we leave you for... Fine, we leave you four acres of flat, graded, ready to build. And we won't go put trees and re-grass it, or we'll grass it so it doesn't get dusty. But we won't have to restore it as habitat because you're going to put buildings there, would be the concept. So things like that where we can hear from you, probably in the next, yeah, 18 months, two years would be good and, but it doesn't have to be, you know, absolute for our purposes. Using that area as, you know, as fill, that would be, that would be useful to us to know because if not, finding 83,000 yards of clean somewhere else is, takes a little time.
I mean, there's clearly, for the committees who have spent a great deal of time struggling with this and, and mapping this all out, there's clearly leanings in one direction or another on this. And, you know, one suggestion to go back out to the public. And having time to do that makes sense because that, those, that initial public input, I think, as good as it was in one way, it was pretty limited in another way because a lot of new things for people to respond to.
In the last 20 years, we've really tried, for my committee's sake, to keep this out of the public, except when we really needed to. And one of the side effects of that is we've gotten a great cleanup, but we have a whole lot of people who don't really have a sense of how much has been done and how much safer this is than it was 20 years ago. How many things have been removed and are not problems and, and are not, you know, I, again, fire, fire engines went by my house today, and I didn't think, oh, my God, what if they're going to Star Med? Because there aren't buildings there anymore.
They're to burn.
Are a problem, yeah.
Jane, do you have any...
No, I think this is in keeping with what we've discussed.
I like where you're going with, you've obviously done a lot of thinking about the topography and the uses and the east, the east side being, you know, lends itself more to open space and the west side with the ring road. And it really sounds like you're on the right track there.
Well, hold on. For me, what would be very helpful, I'm supportive of it, great job. Thank you very much for both the old committee and the new committee, which guys have done fabulous work. It would be helpful to me because over this 18-month period, things could change too, right? Be helpful to me is if we said yes to this master plan, if you will. If we could develop a list of what it means. I don't, what actions then will EPA take? So whoever heard some of them, you're going to use part of it for fill. What, what other actions are going to be taken by EPA if we say, let's do it, right? Are they going to put septic fields? Are they going to put conduit? I know, I know. So other than using the high points for, for fill, what, what exactly is going to happen here?
Okay, yeah, we'll try to put together a more detailed timeline and list of actions.
More detail about what's going to go there.
Yeah.
I don't need, I don't need that, at least from my thinking. I just need to know if we say yes.
What are the next steps? Yeah, what will then happen?
You're going to clear cut the, the trees, you know?
Yeah.
So that would be helpful to me.
Okay.
Well, I think it has, I think you've heard from the board, it's got our support and our thanks. And I think come back to us and, and we'll start working on what do we have to do to think about ownership here because that really bedevils me a little bit and...
We don't want you to wait for us to come back to you to think about doing. We want you to tell the lawyers to start getting that together.
No, I want you, I want you to come back to me as this 18-month plays out, right?
We want the lawyers to be working on that tomorrow.
Well, then, I, I'd feel better, I think your point is right on that you've been doing so much, but the public doesn't really know. There's so much that I've learned in the last few months about this that I didn't know. So I think we all need to get out there and communicate it because otherwise, I mean, I think, speaking as a select board member, I'd be more comfortable voting to acquire it if I know that the risk has been communicated well, the support is there, people understand what they're getting into. There's not, the fears are appropriate instead of, you know, panic or not, you know, that they're appropriate.
Right, and so our, I mean, our charge is to sort of develop some reuse scenarios for you to help, you know, the town take action. But our charge is not to do risk communication to the town. So it's, I think we need to sort of maybe have another round with you guys if you want to expand our charge or if you're looking for us to do some of that. That's not really what we're looking to do.
I can work on that with the 2229 committee though.
Yeah, 2229 done. Well, I think there's going to be a lot of additional meetings that are going to have to take place between now and when we thank everybody for all the work and we open the door to the new sports complex or whatever.
But what we're taking away is our next steps are going to be to proceed with, you know, two or three scenarios, take it back to the public, get some input on some specific issues, and then start to do due diligence over the summer.
I think one of the things I still would, would hope we don't do is have a debate about whether it should be a, a soccer-playing field or an indoor town. I don't, I think the uses that you've got laid out here, that kind of choice is fine, right? I think you've made good use of the land. You want the buildings where the buildings were, that makes a great deal of sense. I've been over in that back C part stuff, nothing's going to happen over there. Trails is going to work. So I think you've got the level of detail enough for me. I think it's now getting it done. And then there's going to be a follow-on committee of some kind that's going to really, maybe it's you guys too, I don't know who it is, but is going to actually then be charged with doing real design work.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate you coming. Right. All right. Take a minute, let...
And we didn't get the, your comments, Carrie.
On, on what? Oh, you mean the red line thing? Right, Jeremy took that to make copies and hopefully he has.
Well, maybe for the purposes of tonight, maybe you can just offer them in your, like...
If he gives it back to me, yeah, sure.
All right. Let's, so the next item on our agenda is the transportation follow-up. Jane?
Yes, thank you. As you know, we began this discussion of our responsibilities as a select board to take on the big question number three, which would be having, or four, having looked at housing, economic vitality, and capital planning. Transportation was the, the other big question, big idea, big opportunity that came out of, envisioned Concord. And to that end, we had a discussion, oh, I think it was in a pre-Christmas select board meeting, which date I'm not going to remember. Maybe it was just after, that tried to wrap our heads around what, what we could do, what was appropriate, and what we could do in Concord on transportation. And starting with the, with the acknowledgement that transportation's one of those intersection, intersecting points. And so we're going to limit this discussion and these actions to what, what can we do in Concord that's local versus all of the other pieces that we will be active on. But those are more responsive versus things that we can actually potentially control within our own boundaries. And to this end, we, we started to draft a charge for a committee, a transportation advisory committee, i.e. a, a committee that would, that would report. And one of the nuances of this committee would be that it would report to the town manager and the select board, but that the town manager, it would be a committee of the town manager, in large part because many of the intersecting points of work and ongoing work are already under the town manager. They represent, you know, public works initiatives and such as, you know, the complete streets, which is actually in, in planning, parking studies, cut-through studies, traffic management group determinations. And then also we would want to bring in the school transportation needs. I, this is a, this is one of those group hugs, shall we say. And so I, I took comments on the initial draft that I circulated to my fellow select board members and this is, and the town manager. And this next draft is the result, it says it is a red line, but red line for some reason wasn't coming through. So this is where we start, and then...
This is the red line. It's not red, but...
This is the, this is Terry's comments.
Yeah.
But I'm saying my, the draft I circulated said it was redlined.
Oh.
And that did not come through, right? So with that, I would open up conversation around the table.
Well, the, the things that are underlined were in red, but they didn't come through. And they're mostly grammatical. This is some, so this is Jane's version that she sent out last night. So in the second paragraph, I just kind of fixed the grammar in the middle. So it says appointed by the town manager and working closely with the select board. I think that's what we agreed to last time because the...
That's great, thank you, Terry.
Okay, and then in the next paragraph, again, such as, I think is what you wanted, such as bicycle policies which may include, it's just a grammatical type thing.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
And then I added back in something that, I'm not sure why you took out this part about including the needs of students, seniors, and those with disabilities. So I didn't know if we wanted, I personally think we should have that in, but I just, so I put that in.
I don't remember it being taken out, so it wasn't intentional, so I appreciate that.
Okay, and then on the back, number, the other, number two, I think those underlying things are your changes, Jane, they were like in blue. And then number five, I, I just thought we should add in safety and fiscal sustainability.
The, the blue is simply because those are links to documents.
Right.
And I don't know why SAS showed up that way.
Right, I don't, I don't know what that was.
Because of five, you added safety and fiscal sustainability.
Right, just for discussion, you know. And then membership again, appointed by the town manager. And then I think we discussed last time, members of the pedestrian community, possible members of the business community and/or affordable housing community and/or the town social worker. So these are just points of discussion.
I don't have a problem with, but what does, who's a member of the pedestrian community?
Right. That feels like the residents.
Right, that, right. I'm having the same problem. And yet, we have the bicycling community. I don't know, it seems to me there's sort of these groups. There's groups that are walkers and groups that are bicyclists.
Yeah.
Groups that are, you know, have business interests. And I don't know how to get a handle on that.
Okay. I, I mean, I think that, to the extent that, that we're singling up members of the bicycling community, it's in part because we know we've got an organized bicycling community versus there hasn't been an organized hiking or, or walking group that...
I think I would just prefer to say we should be sensitive. Somewhere in the draft, some language that says we should be sensitive to include representation from the various, you know, that kind of thing.
I think we said pedestrian issues will also be addressed.
Right.
But, you know, certainly not intending ever to exclude.
So Jane, in terms of the membership, there was a conversation last time about, and I'm not sure where we came out on it, public safety versus having someone from the town traffic committee and whether there was some overlap there. I remember there was some conversation. Did you have a recommendation on that or...
Yeah, I mean, I think what I would, where I was trying to guide this from my perspective is we do have a traffic management committee that is an internal committee. And basically, I would view this as kind of supplanting that in some ways with the addition of some people who aren't really part of that now. I do think the addition of someone from the council on aging would be beneficial for that, for planning, not every single meeting, but for certainly as a member of the committee. I do think that if you had...
So you're suggesting to eliminate from this list the, the...
Town traffic committee member.
Committee representative?
Yeah, I mean, I think this would be, this would replace the traffic committee. So it would be basically same members, it would be the town engineer, several members of CPW, you know, the, the director for streets and highway, highway and grounds, and then the, and the director of the department, police, not only police chief, but also the lieutenant is the one who manages a lot of the traffic issues. Like I said, someone from the council on aging. I don't think you'd need a social worker because those interests would be covered by the council on aging representative and...
I was wondering if someone from the disability commission?
I think that's...
Yeah, that's good, yes. And I'm not sure why the HDC is listed.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I don't know about the, well, but I, there's two things that I would, one, there's no environmental, we talk about environmental sustainability, but there's no...
There's no CSAT or...
No representation down below.
Well, I think one of the questions is, would that be a climate action advisory board member? Or would that be a, would that be part of the town departments? Would that be Kate Hanley or somebody, or her designate?
It would be Kate if, if needed. And like I said, this isn't a closed loop, but not every, in traffic planning, not every project has a sustainability component to it. And so having a sustainability coordinator sit through meetings, the same thing with, like the HDC. Not every, not every project is going to be in the, in the, in the district. And so having an HDC member would be, on an as-needed basis, we could certainly consult with people who have, you know, interest and, and our expertise. But I think day-to-day management of traffic issues, that will inform broader transportation. I think sometimes it's, sometimes less is more.
Well, I, I think, I just want to make sure that we all understand that this is not a traffic first and transportation second. This is transportation with traffic as one of the things that we want to manage with the way we, we look at transportation.
Given the importance of the town character, as people talk about, I think, I don't know whether it's HDC, I don't know who it is.
I, I was a placeholder for...
Representing the historical sense of the town.
Right.
You know, we don't want to wind up in a fight down the road.
Well, and part of this, this, at least in my thought process, was this is a committee that will educate itself as, as well as others. And that's why, that's one of its values, is that in the assembling of all the, of all of the different opportunities and the, you know, coming up with a, a process and plan, you know, we're going to have to look at all those different issues. And so we want to make sure that, that we've got the kind of representation that would bring those to light in discussion.
And one thing I see is that this committee might have some subcommittees. For example, the town traffic group would be a, maybe a subcommittee that would meet and advise on, you know, technical specs or whatever. And then another subcommittee might be the cycling group. So depending on the projects and these...
Well, that's probably a good idea. But then you want to, you're going to want to put in the, the charge, the ability of the committee to create subcommittees unless you mean you and I are going to be a subcommittee, you know what I mean?
No, I don't think so because...
No, I didn't think you did.
Right.
And I think that, that said, when I said they will be important, or when we say there will be important, subcommittee is focused on specific local transportation, such as...
Well, you have to, you have to...
Then put it as a list of the charges.
Let them have the ability to do that, or they're going to come back to the town manager. We need a subcommittee on X, we need a sub...
No, sub, subcommittees.
So give them the authority to appoint.
Right.
Should I agree with this, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I was to touch on Mike's point about community character. I think we haven't talked about someone from DPLM, but I think, you know, that department, you know, touches a lot of, especially when it comes to development and changes. And I think they are kind of an administrative guardian of, of town character in many ways. Division of Planning and Land Management, so somebody from the planning staff or land manager, something like that.
That's a good idea.
So maybe, because I think, like you said, someone who kind of understands the broader community fabric and the character of the town, their work is really heavily involved in kind of guard, in safeguarding that with... in, in kind of guard, in safeguarding that when it comes to development, so I think that mindset would apply well here, and...
Again, the list of potentials members, now, I also want to, also remind everybody that we're looking at a, a committee that right now has gotten very large.
Right.
I, I had reflected one of our, I think it was Sue, Susan, that suggested we try and limit the number.
Right.
Um, I can look at this right now, just saying, based on our discussions and Terry's additions, we're past eleven here.
Right, but we have some duplication, like if we have director of planning or designate, then maybe we don't also need HDC, or if we have traffic, town traffic committee, we also need public works and public safety, and so we sort of have some duplication or overlap in here. Stephen, you pointed out like COA and social worker might be in overlap, it might, but...
In our context, it would be.
Well, um, the only reason that I put social worker, um, I think last time I was talking about, um, she cited that the biggest social issue that she's dealing with in town now is transportation, not just for seniors, for all the people that she's counseling, transportation is the, and I, I, it's just an idea.
No, but I think, yes, that's, that is the case, but the COA, which runs our vans, does try and man, deal with that, and basically shares the same desire to improve mobility for, for seniors and, and popul, and other populations in need, so, but that's administered to the COA, and the social workers work in the COA. So I think that, just to, just to be a little more efficient with the committee, but I think having, I mean, we talk about having town residents kind of at-large members of town residents, I think it's safe to assume that, um, you know, someone who has an interest in cycling
Right.
As a kind of an at-large member would be important on the committee, and then in terms of the last member, we, I would want to look for somebody who, um, you know, certainly has either specialized knowledge in transportation planning, or, you know, traffic engineering or something like that, or, um, you know, is a part of another committee that deals with this as well, so we want an at-large member, so to speak, but someone who has a, a set of skills or experiences that would fit well with it. I mean, I mean beyond just a set of pedestrian skills.
Right.
And we, and on other charges, we have, when we've listed at-large, we've said such as, in parentheses, which helps address that. When, um, when we've listed members of the bicycling community, I know we're trying to, to tighten this rather than expand it, but someone, even from the bicycling community, someone who has family bicycling experience versus adult, well, just to differentiate, adult bicycling experience would give a whole nother window, but if we're down to one member...
I mean, I think there's, there's been a lot of cycling advocacy that, that I've heard from, we have a committee for Bruce Freeman Rail Trail that's done a lot of analysis of this, so I think we have a, a broad base of candidates that we could look at. But I agree with you, and I think someone who has a diverse set of experiences and viewpoints versus, I forget what Phillip called them, or Wade called them, the, was it the lycra crowd or something like that, the people who do the race bikes versus someone who does family cycling, we want somebody who kind of understands the, the gamut.
Well, I think the, since we're going to specifically add, perhaps it's number nine, develop subcommittees that, such as blah, 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 um, I wouldn't assume that, that we'd have to incorporate the entire subcommittee, in other words, we could have a member of the bicycling committee potential, uh, uh, community on this, this committee, and then if, if the committee formed that subcommittee under their charge, then that individual could then be responsible for collecting the input. So the question, you know, is if we want to have more than one to have that balance, or if we want to put a specific, um, input point for a, you know, someone who reflects the range of Concord's bicycling interests.
Okay, I, I heard you say add a number nine
Yes.
Subcommittee, but that wouldn't, that doesn't go, doesn't go there, it goes up, and there will be important subcommittees focused on specific local, blah, 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 blah. The committee has the authority to appoint.
Oh, okay.
Subcommittees up there. And then
Mike, I'm sorry, before you get off that point
Yeah.
I, I think we'd want the flexibility to have that both on a standing basis and an ad hoc basis.
Right.
So you don't need to say.
Yeah.
You can do either one. And then the last paragraph on the first page as a first step. When we see this next time, I think as a first step gets deleted.
Yep.
Because we'll be making declarative statements, right?
Yep.
And doesn't suggest, but that you're outlining their duties and responsibilities. So do you think you have enough to come back to us with hopefully a final draft?
I will certainly take everybody's input and...
And did someone from disability?
Yes.
We need to spell out any other subcommittees, right now it only lists the bicycle type of subcommittee, should we, because it says such as, should we say such as traffic management committee or bicycle, or just...
I think I'd like to, I mean, I think have some flexibility, let us get together and see where the subcommittees are, like what's needed for subcommittees.
Well, right, it'll definitely be such as, you definitely can have however many you need.
Well, you don't want to, I think the point is you don't want to list a bunch of them, so it sounds like you've delineated which ones will happen.
Right, but we've only listed one, is that a separate?
Setting the course of the work before we started, so to speak, but I mean, I think, I think you're right, there are cer, I think we all know the ones that we're going to, like there will be a bicycling subcommittee, I think that's an important thing, that'll be, you know, it'll be certainly from the cycling community, but it'll also be the town engineer, and it'll also be probably someone from the police department to kind of talk about, you know, where
Safety.
Yeah, safety and, and, you know, if it's, where can we put bike lanes, that's really a survey question, meaning like for field survey, where we have the right of way and things like that, so I think, I think I share your vision of that. So I, by my, on my notes, I had eight, some, you know, internal, which would leave, I would say maybe if we had a committee of ten, that would be then some, an at-large member from the cycling community, and then another at-large member with skills and experience such as, you know, and, you know, knowledge of transportation or traffic or planning or something like that.
Well, I don't think that quite, quite captures, you know, the disability issues that, unless you see that as
That was in my eight.
That was in your eight.
Yeah, so I, town manager, superintendent, DPLM or director of planning, sustainability coordinator, public works, public safety, council on aging, disability commission. Now, the thing to understand though is that public works is three to four people, and public safety is probably another two to three people, but not all, but I think that they, they can have an agency seat, so to speak, or they can be present at the meeting and kind of help us, help guide the discussion.
I don't want to appoint committees like that.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's not, it's not the way it works.
Uh-huh.
No, it's, she's, she's it, right? They can certainly attend, you know, there are open meetings and they can certainly attend, but
But as a voting member, it's got to be an individual.
Okay, that's fair enough, sure.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Jane, very much. Thank you all for your input on that. Next is committee liaison reports, Susan.
On the twenty-eighth, I attended the trails, and they, it was a pretty standard meeting, there wasn't anything unusual. Same day, I attended the conservation stewardship, conservation restriction stewardship committee, they're in need of a member, so if anyone out there is interested, please fill in a green card, and they discussed that, what conservation properties they're monitoring and what the status of the reporting is on those properties, so that again was a fairly standard meeting. On last Thursday, there was a Concord middle school building committee meeting where there's the main part of the discussion was about scheduling and when to, um, request special town, this is in the fall, when to request special town meeting and when to have the election, and I believe, and the committee wants to come before the board sooner rather than later to discuss this, because once that's set, then they can fill in the blanks on their scheduling.
Do they know enough?
Hmm.
To have an opinion about when?
Yes, well, they appear to, they voted.
To do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I also went to the conservation coffee, which is always a very interesting meeting on the fourth, and they talked about, Jamie Eldridge was there, he was talking about Public Lands Preservation Act, which the state wants to, is proposing, the MMA is opposed to it because it's, you know, local versus state control. I was asked if I would support it, if we would support it, and I said, I need to know a whole lot more about it, so I'll follow up on that. The other thing I went to last Friday was
It's just to, for your interest to preserve open space, so if the town, if a town decides to build a building on a piece of open space, they've got to find some replacement open space for it.
Okay.
So you can imagine, I mean, some towns could probably do that pretty easily, Concord, on the other hand, has a lot of open space already, and some towns, you know, don't have open space, and so it really would, so that's why MMA, Mass Municipal Association has not been supportive of it. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
And the last item is, the legal women voters had the first Friday event last Friday, and the subject was the middle school, and the panel was Dr. Lori Hunter, Matt Carroll, who's the project manager, Matt Root, who's a sustainability member of the building committee, and Kate Hanley, and it was a good presentation and good questions and answers.
Good, thank you. Linda?
I also attended the first Friday on the middle school, and it was a very good presentation, and I do think they have definite, definite dates, they're looking at it in September for us to look at. I attended the Concord Housing Development Corporation, they acted on some grants to help for health and safety for elders and others to stay in their homes. They also had a presentation by Charlie Parker, Alice Kaufman, and Michael, Michael McLeer, to discuss the fossil fuel free development, and I think got some good feedback from concerns that the housing committee, housing production issues for that committee. I attended the Concord Housing Development Corporation, oh, Concord Housing Authority, excuse me, and they're continuing with pursuing the federal repositioning of their units, as well as continuing to try to make progress on the, with the town on access for the Juro property and their, and their building. And that's it for this week.
Sure.
Okay, I attended the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee, they are planning some events for Arts Week on May second, there, there will be a band scramble and an art scramble where they're going to reveal the mural, and a community talent show.
Ooh.
Yeah, and they've received a $300 grant from the cultural council, where they're going to be doing fold-out maps with businesses listed, it's really a, a good project for economic vitality, restaurants, artists, points of interest, they had a facsimile of it that they were showing around, so great project. They're also working with Marsha, Marsha Rasmussen on four gateway signs and three parking signs, and a kiosk, a large kiosk with a big map at the depot, showing what's within walking distance. So a lot of progress with all of that, and the porch fest is already set for September 12th.
That was a huge success.
Yeah, it's a very, very sad to miss that.
Very well organized.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wasn't able to attend the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail because I had two other meetings going on then, but, um, they are looking for guidance from the select board, I had a conversation with the chair, Jim Lyon, so Phase 2B, the bid opening has occurred, and the lowest bid, there were eight bids, the lowest bid came in just under $10 million, so it's
Terry, can you explain to everybody what Phase 2B is?
Oh, Phase 2B is the big rail trail phase going over Route 2, and so now the bids have been opened, the state is looking to award the bid, and the construction is hoping to be finished by fall of '21, so it's moving along quickly. So what they're looking for, for guidance from us is, they're going to have three vacancies coming up, and they're trying to decide if they should be aggressively trying to recruit people to fill these vacancies, or if the select board wants to maybe fold in this committee now that we're going to be having a transportation committee, because they're under the impression that once 2B is finished, the only thing left is 2D, which is from the end of West Concord down through Sudbury, and they're under the impression that once 2B is finished, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail is pretty much, our committee will be dissolved. So what do you think? Do you think we should continue them after Phase 2B, or start to phase them out since they're having a lot of vacancies, or?
Well, they, they're going to have three vacancies as of 2021, is that
No, this spring, they're going to have three vacancies.
Okay, meanwhile, we're still going to have that bridge going forward, so...
Right, we have another year and a half after that, so that's sort of the issue, it's...
And then we deal with the Sudbury side, so I don't see that
I think we should keep them
Keep going for a while.
Keep them going for a while here.
Yep, okay.
You know, it's love and affection.
Okay, and I attended the board of assessors meeting, they're starting the weekly meetings for abatement hearings, and I caught a little bit of the finance committee meeting, and that excellent meeting with the league on the middle school, a great turnout, learned a lot of that.
Thank you, Jane.
The NRC is in a fairly quiet mode, and I will, the most pertinent thing for us to all be thinking about for the HDC is they've got, we need to get two members, and the select board has responsibility for one, and we really need to find somebody who's with an, an architect for this, they're missing that, and it's, we've gone through the green cards, and there isn't, we, we don't have the fruit in our green cards right now, so all ideas, please. And I attended the FinCom meeting in Mike's absence, and I would, which was a, you know, they're, they were discussing, as, as we have the annual town meeting warrant articles that they're reviewing, we'll get Dean over there who oversaw it, and, and I think Matt's there, who was what first up with the planning board articles, he walked through those, it was a pretty robust and educated discussion, and then the community preservation committee also brought their articles in front, I don't think we'd be surprised by any of the questions. There was a robust discussion of whether or not the, the two potentially religious organization sites that have made the list would stand the list, or how that was going to get worked out, again, not a surprise. Terry, you were there for the capital planning piece.
Right.
Maybe you can chime in on that piece.
Okay, um, right, I was at the assessors meeting, so I decided to come over and try to catch that piece. Basically, this was a report from the capital planning task force, so as you know, the capital planning task force has been meeting every few weeks, we're meeting again tomorrow, and our public hearing is March 2nd. We're trying to come up with some draft recommendations that we can present at the public hearing to see what the public input is. So one of the draft recommendations, per our charge, we're supposed to decide, remember there was tier one, tier two, tier three on those capital projects, we're supposed to decide what is a very large project, and what is the definition, and how do you determine between two and three. So we have an initial draft recommendation that actually was proposed by Stephen, that, let's see if I get this right, it's five million or more, or if it's a phased project over several years, if any two or more phases are going to add up to five over several years, if any two or more phases are going to add up to five million. So that is, we think the recommendation we'll be bringing, along with many other recommendations, to the public hearing. So I wasn't totally sure why it was on the FINCOM agenda, but it was a good way to publicize that we're having this hearing on our side.
Thank you.
Right.
So, is that it?
That's really it.
So I attended the conservation coffee along with Susan, and Stephen and I both attended the business partnership meeting. I also attended the Concord Public School meeting where they talked about the budget, they're still, I think, a little bit out of, out of the guideline of the $100,000.
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven thousand. And they talked about and agreed to send a letter to the MSBA again for the middle school building project. And then Stephen and I met with Representatives Library Corporation, and I think it's fair to say we made substantial progress on the library agreement. And as I've said before, once we have a draft of that, then we'll bring it here for a public, public discussion of it.
I did want to, before we close this out, I did want to offer that as a citizen or resident of Concord, I attended the funeral of the 18-year-old young man who committed suicide 10 days ago, and the reception afterwards, and I just wanted to, I think probably on behalf of me certainly, and I suspect on all of ours, acknowledge that incredible loss and, and watch, watching what the schools are doing is really quite awe-inspiring. In fact, while we're meeting here, there's a very large public meeting on students in crisis, and so I just didn't want to end the meeting without-
Real tragedy.
-mentioning that.
Must be just awful for the family. All right, we, the next order of business miscellaneous correspondence, we had quite a number of pieces of miscellaneous correspondence. We had a letter from Neil Rasmussen laying out his perspective on the Estonbrook Road litigation. I wrote back to him thanking him for sharing his perspective. We had a letter from Jean, or an email from Jean Goldsberg requesting the public given an opportunity to review and discuss the draft agreement with the library. I wrote back to her and told her I just mentioned that that's what we would do. And we had an email from, from Patricia Guyer expressing concerns over the cost of the Estonbrook litigation and encouraging us to return to mediation. I wrote back and thanked her for sharing her concerns and indicated that we are open to mediation. Received an email from Peter Gifford, also concerned about the cost of the litigation, and I don't think I had a chance to respond to him as yet, but it was today. The next item on our agenda is the election worker appointments. We have a memorandum from the town clerk to the select board, laying out the list of appointees and if there's any discussion on that, and if there isn't, I would certainly entertain a motion to approve this list.
I'll move to appoint the election officers as stated in the memo dated February 10th, 2020, from the town clerk, Teri. It was a second.
Is there a second, Susan? Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close. Thank you. We have no committee nominations or committee appointments, and next we have public comment. Who has a comment? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, thank you and good night.